So I'll read it. So we'll do those.
You want to do that one, do that one first, then the other. Your continuance and then we'll go to the community health and then we'll go back to the regular schedule.
Yeah, so you, myself and Mike will do the plan. And then we'll go to the others. Okay. Whenever we get the word go from Mr. Gene. What happened to your wrist?
It's, I have a chipped bone in my wrist. It bothers me from time to time.
Oh. That must be tough work out there in Acton.
Bolton, yeah, it is. Boy, the ticks are terrible in Bolton, I'll tell you that. Oh, my goodness.
They're awful.
Oh.
I've been doing a little turkey hunting and believe me, I have to go through my, by my, through myself with a fine tooth comb. I do, I use some stuff that's called Sawyer's Parethium. And it's excellent to keep ticks and stuff off.
Is it really? Where do you get that?
You can get it at Cabela's. You, I've seen it at Walmart.
We're all set, Mr. Chairman.
We're all set, we're ready.
We're recording.
All right. I'd like to call to order tonight's meeting of the Gardener zoning board of appeals on May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one. Before we begin the hearing, I'd like to go over some information from the governor's office and the ground rules which we operate under. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March twelfth, two thousand twenty order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter thirty A, paragraph twenty, and the governor's March fifteenth, two thousand twenty order imposing a strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Gardener zoning board will be conducted via remote participation on the city's YouTube channel. The audio or visual video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings will be posted in the city's website as soon as possible after the meeting. Since this meeting is being conducted via Zoom, all votes taken will be on a roll call and all participants to raise their hands to be recognized. I just want to make a correction. I know I said May seventeenth. This meeting is being held today, May eighteenth. In Gardner, three members of the zoning board of appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Applications will normally be heard in the sequence in which they appear in the public notice. Board is under no obligation to adhere to the sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be the hindrance of the workings of the board. An applicant may appear in his or her own behalf or be represented by an agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the board. Representatives of the city shall be heard. The abutters to the property present shall be heard. Those in opposition to the application shall be heard. Members of the board who are hearing the case may direct appropriate questions during the hearing. Due to the meeting being held remotely, we ask that questions be held until prompted. And you should have a question. If you should have a question, please raise your hand to the screen. Phone-in attendees will be asked periodically if they have any questions. At certain times, we may mute your mic so as to clearly hear who was speaking. We ask for patience when questions arise, so we may respond accordingly. The board must render its decision regarding variance request within one hundred days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within sixty-five days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The board must render its decision regarding special permits within ninety days after the closing of the public hearing. All three members of the board must vote in favor of the variance or special permit for it to be granted and approved. The right to appeal the decision of the board is provided for in the zoning act. More information can be found online under chapter forty A, section seventeen, under Mass General Law. No variance or special permit or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that twenty days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office and no appeals have been filed and is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county and/or district. The burden of supporting the need for the variance or special permit rests with the applicant or representative of the applicant. The board requests that each person identify himself or herself as to name and address before addressing the board. Sitting on tonight's hearing initially, because we will be substituting members, but on the initial cases will be Mr. Randy Haglund and Mr. Mike Gary and myself, Ray LaFawn. And we'll identify when the members change. The meeting will be recorded and livestreamed on YouTube. Does anyone? Now, I can only see people that are visual. Anybody on by phone, I cannot see if they object or not. If someone does, please state, I object, state your name so we can record. Again, I'll state, does anyone object to the taking of this meeting? There are no objections, so we're going to begin. And the first item before the board is a letter that came in from a case that was recently applied. It came in from us, the Jason Peeland, looking for a variance for Summit Avenue in Gardner, and it's addressed just to the Gardener zoning board of appeals. At this time, we would like to withdraw our zoning application without prejudice. We think with the cost of lumber and the timing, we could not be able to build an affordable house on this lot. We would try, we would like to try again in the future. I will be working with a survey company to re-survey the lot in question and to be better organized. Thank you. Jason Peeland. Do I hear a motion to approve and accept the withdrawal from Mr. Peeland? Michael, you approve?
It's almost.
You make the motion?
Sure.
Excuse me. I'll second the motion. I will second the motion.
Any discussion?
Yeah, one comment, Mr. Mr. Chairman. We should probably read the ad so that people know exactly what case we are voting on. If you want, I can read the denial.
Yeah.
Yeah, no problem. Mr. Peeland had submitted an application to construct a single-family home on Lot forty-two Summit Avenue in Gardner. Parcel ID identified as number R twelve dash eight dash twenty-two. It's located in a single-family one residential zoning district. And it was denied because it did not comply with six seventy-five article six twenty attachment two colon one of the city code of Gardner, which required a minimum yard, lot frontage of one hundred feet.
Okay. All right, thank you then. Okay, I'm gonna call for all those in favor accepting this letter of withdrawal without prejudice. Say aye, Randy?
Aye.
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 Okay, aye, motion carried, approval. So noted. The next case before the board will be that of Mr. Alan Belanger, one sixty-one Chelsea Street for a office and warehouse. I do have a letter here. Randy, if you have the full case before you. If you can read it, do you have the case before you?
Yes, I do.
Would you please read it for the audience?
Absolutely. It was an application from Alan Belanger, West Mini Storage, to operate a warehouse and storage with a professional office at one sixty-one Chelsea Street, Gardner. It was parcel ID R seventeen twenty sixteen. It was located in the single-family one residential zoning district. It was denied because it did not comply with chapter six seventy-five, article one colon one, number thirty-one professional office and number thirty, seventy-six warehouse and storage facilities of the city code of Gardner. The code requires that that use is not permitted in single-family one zoning district.
Okay, thank you very much. Then actually, on May seventeenth, yesterday, we received an email from Mr. Brian Marchetti, the VP of McCarty Engineering, representing as agent, Mr. Alan Belanger. And I'll just read it quickly here. It just says, and they addressed it actually to our administrative assistant, Rachel. Just as Rachel, the applicant would like to request a continuance to the meeting, to the June meeting, so the board has time to review the plans and conduct a site visit. Thank you, Brian Marchetti. And I'll just clarify that is plans were needed and plans were only delivered yesterday, which did not allow, excuse me, were delivered Saturday, which did not allow the members to have access to the plans nor the opportunity of time to review them. So Mr. Marchetti submitted this letter requesting a continued continuance to be included on our June meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept this letter for continuance and approve the forward or continuance to our June meeting?
It's almost. Seconded.
Okay, any further discussion? There being no further discussion, then I will call for a vote. Randy Haglund?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I, myself, Ray LaFawn, aye. Approved, continued to the June meeting. Okay, the next one. I'm gonna turn the chair and ship over to Mr. Randall Haglund and add Mr. David Antea as the third member. It is Martin Brothers, and I'll let Randy read it, but it is a conflict for me to be connected with this case. So Mr. Haglund will take over and run this portion of the meeting. Meeting is yours, Randy.
Thank you, Mr. LaFawn. Next case on the hearing tonight is case number twenty twenty-one dash oh five oh two. It's a application from Martin Brothers Contracting, Sixth Grove Street, Millbury, Mass. To it's for variance application to allow parking in front of, forward of the building. I'd like to make, entertain a motion this morning, discuss first, this morning, we received an email that was distributed by our secretary, Rachel Taylor, that was received by, sent by Tim Hunt as a representative of Martin Brothers Construction with some revised plans. I personally haven't even had a chance to even look at them. So I'll entertain a motion from the other members to also continue this case to the June meeting.
Motion to continue to June.
Second. All right, motion is to continue this case to June. Any, any discussion?
I haven't, I haven't had a chance to read them either, so I think it makes a lot of sense.
Yep, all those in favor of continuing this meeting to the June meeting, which would be the June fifteenth meeting of the zoning board, say aye.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
Aye. All those in favor? Next case, I'll turn the chairmanship back to Mr. LaFawn as chairman.
Okay, thank you, Haglund. I will just add a footnote, and I waited till after your vote. I did speak to the CEO and president, Mr. DiMalia, and he was aware that there would be a probably continuance, and he was actually very much in favor, so we would have an opportunity to read the plans completely. And plus, there was some issues, something came down from planning with a couple of suggestions, so, you know, we're not sure how that's gonna be handled on the plans, but he thought it was the best move to do at this point in time. Okay, so next case, we're gonna have his, let me get it right here. Excuse me, Mr. Timothy Bulcom, Zero Matthew Street for Contractors Yard, case number two oh two one dash oh four dash oh three. The application to operate a contractors yard at Zero Mechanic Street, Gardner, Mass. Personal ID W three seven dash two one dash one located in the rural residential zoning district, RR two, is denied as it does not comply with chapter six seventy-five attachment, one colon one table of uses, number fifty-nine. Contracting business and contractors yard, including storage in the open in the city of Gardner. The zoning code states that your use requested is not permitted, a not permitted use in the RR two zoning district. So Mr. will begin the case with Mr. Slocom, agent or attorney.
Hi, my name is Chris Stoddard. I'm the engineer working for Mr. Slocom on this project. I appreciate you folks taking the time today to listen to our our application. Basically, what Mr. Slocom is looking to do here is we're looking to install.
Excuse me, Mr. Stoddard, can you state your, your address and what firm you were working for, if you're working for a firm or?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So it's Stoddard Engineering, and it's one eight six three Old Keene Road in Athol, Mass.
Thank you.
So basically, what we're looking to do here is we're looking to construct up to six seventy-five hundred square foot commercial buildings to have indoor and outdoor storage and just operate as a rental spaces within those buildings. We, the site does, is not currently served by Town Water or Town Sewer. So we would be proposing to install a septic system to, to Title V code as well as installing a public water, I guess it would be considered a public water well on the site. The project is located within the residential zone two, but due to the proximity, it's in a Butts Route one forty in Westminster, excuse me, in Gardner. We, we feel that the project is a, is really is an ideal project for this location. The, the town has done multiple studies in, of this area indicating that it's a really ideal location for a industrial park or commercial type buildings. The nearest property residential house is actually over two hundred feet away. So we, we feel that this project really fits this area because you're not really gonna, we're not really necessarily in a resident, we are in the residential zone, but the project is separated quite, quite a ways from the nearest housing. The project itself, it's on a twenty-four, just a little bit over twenty-four acre piece of property, about twenty-four point nine acres. It's a slope site. We're looking to, we don't, our intention is not to just clear cut the site and level it. We, we understand the sensitivity of the area and the community, and we really want to work with the topography to kind of cite the, cite the buildings in a way that take advantage of that slope and take advantage of the contours and the topography in the area. Obviously, we're maintaining as much of the green space and the forested portion as we can while still being able to meet the needs of the, the project as well as all the code requirements for fire protection transit around the site.
Thank.
So I think, I think that's basically it. We, I think we can, unless Tim, the owner, wants to speak to a little bit further on it, but again, I'm here available to answer any and all questions that you folks have.
Okay, all right, you're all set at this point, Mr. Slocom. I'll open it up to my members. Mr. Haglund and Mr. Gary, do you have any questions at this point?
How far from one forty is your developed area gonna be?
So the driveway to the property is approximately a hundred and fifty feet, two hundred feet from the, from Route one forty. The development, once you pull into the driveway, the development will be to the left of that, so it's the, about two hundred feet, two hundred and fifty feet, plus or minus from Route one forty.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Haglund?
Several questions. Can you discuss what you're intending to do for exterior lighting?
I could.
I think, I think Tim, the, the property owner can speak to that.
Yeah, I can speak to that. Timothy Slocom, owner of Zero Matthew Street, currently operating out of a industrial park in South Gardner, near Mackey's Building Center, but to answer your question, Mr. Haglund, our intended lighting was to be a downward focus light directly above the entry doors, the overhead doors, pointing down to illuminate the entry doors as well as the large overhead doors. And if there's additional lighting that's needed around the building for fire safety, that, that could be added.
Is the entire, the area gonna be fenced in and secured?
The outdoor storage area will be fenced in. That will also have privacy within the chain link fence that will be gated and a common gate combination will be shared with the fire department in order for them to obtain access in case of emergency. The surrounding along Matthew Street, right now, we intend to keep a natural wooded buffer that's there existing. Some trees and shrubs, clean that up a little bit in order to still meet the code, but also try to blend in with the local community. So right now, it's not completely fenced in, but I would be open to suggestions if that's something you feel is necessary.
Is there going to be a gate on your driveway entrance?
There will not be a gate at phase one. Phase one would be a construction of two buildings. And then later on, phase two would be the construction of building number three, four, five, and six. If the project and plan was moved forward in that direction, that would be the initial plan for that property.
So the phase one, you say it includes a building and the new shop, six thousand plus fifteen hundred square foot office. Is that for your, your own use, or is that for rental, or what is that intended use of that?
The sixty by sixty-four foot shop and then the office space alongside of that shop in the shop building. And that's, that rough set of floor plans would be used for my current business, and that is a, you know, a snow removal business as well as a contracting business.
When you, you mentioned, what, what is your, what's your proposed timing? But I, also, I noticed you've got, in your rental building, you have twenty-one by sixty, are they intended to be self-storage units, or are they rental offices? Because you have bathrooms, it's unusual to see a bathroom in a self-storage unit.
Understood. To answer your timeframe question, our timeframe would be as soon as we get the approval from the city. If they did see that this was in unison with the project plan to move forward, we're prepared to do that. And to answer your question, as far as the bathrooms in the individual units are aligned to working to try to bring some contractors that are operating illegally in the city of Gardner out of their backs of their homes, you know, such as landscapers, electricians, other contractors or builders, and create a safe space for them outside of their residential areas to where they could rent some space, and in doing so, those rented space would have their own individual floor drain, their locks, bathroom, and a vanity sink to wash.
So these aren't for John Q. Public to knock on your door and say, I wanna rent a storage unit for a month at a time, or, or something like that, then?
That's correct. These are, we're gearing towards long-term rental tenants that operate in the city of Gardner or just in the surroundings in order to kind of meet some needs of contractor storage areas.
That's all I have for right now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Haglund. I do have several questions myself, Mr. Slocom. I'm gonna start with an easy one. What are your plans for signage?
I haven't quite gotten there yet, but my initial plans would be potentially have a sign visible from Route one forty in keeping signs directed in the one forty corridor direction rather than impeding Matthew Street, even though the access will be on Matthew Street. I believe that's the, a good public safety access there, but the signs would be more directed towards Route one forty.
Okay, there are limitations on sign sizes, et cetera. Strongly recommend you converse with Mr. Gene about the sizes of the sign, thinking about illumination, et cetera. So you can be prepared as you go forward. If you're big, if they're large enough, you'll be back here probably for a variance on sign size, et cetera.
Okay.
Okay, another question. You stated that there would be outside storage. Could you please describe what the outside storage may consist of in terms of equipment, materials, et cetera?
Sure. Outside storage, I think that may be helpful to review the plan that was submitted. Did you have a site plan that showed the six buildings proposed from a bird's eye view?
I have.
Hand, written, hand-drawn ones?
The hand, oh wait a minute, yes. Mr. Slocom, I'm gonna hold up this document. You can confirm if that's, is the way you're speaking of.
That is correct.
Okay.
So if, if that document there, so coming from the access road, our shop, proposed shop building would be the first one on the right, and the first one on the left would be the proposed rental building. That wouldn't.
Mr. Chairman, can you, Mr. Chairman, can, Rachel, can you find that document and maybe screen save, screen share it or something? I don't have that document that Mr. LaFawn held up in my package. I don't know if Mike, if you have, if you have.
I do have it.
Yeah, I don't have it.
Rachel? Let's see if we can find Rachel.
This is Chris Stoddard, the engineer. I can share, if you want, I have it. I can share my screen if that would be helpful, if I had permissions to do so.
Okay, that would be great. We can't do that because our documents come in hard copy and they're all on the computer.
Yeah, I definitely don't have, I definitely don't have this plan. I've never seen this one. Okay.
Oh.
So just to describe this, again, this is Tim Slocom, owner of the property. To describe what you're seeing here in this picture is the entry access road off of Matthew Street, and you would be turning left to enter into the small industrial proposed, well, in small area for the six buildings that are, are proposed here. So the first building on the right, as you enter into that area that, where the cursor is now, that would be our shop building. There would be two rental units consisted in that on the left side and of that building, correct? And the right side of that building would be occupied of my current business. Moving towards the building, towards Matthew Street, that would be building number two, which would complete the first phase of construction. That would be, consisted of six rental bays with overhead doors and individual access doors. Each bay would have their own bathroom and vanity. Behind those first two sets of buildings, you see four more buildings. The shaded green area between the first and second set of buildings where the cursor is now, that would be the fenced-in storage area that has access through, in between the buildings, and that would be fenced in with the privacy screens of passerbyers on the road, not see what's inside there, what that would consist of, of things like snowplows, some ladders, staging equipment. Not see what's inside there. What that would consist of, of things like snowplows, some ladders, staging equipment, some, some contractor storage areas, maybe even a trailer of that nature. But I believe in the building code of City of Gardner, for outside storage, it does need to be fenced in. So we would utilize that area in those four buildings for use for myself, my own business, as well as the tenants to keep from over scattering, I guess, overburdening the, the parking spots and having things kind of randomly parked throughout the property. So that would be the exterior storage area, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. So nothing would, according to what you're saying, and I'm gonna call it free-range storage, that it would be behind some type of fence or within the, the building, but will not just be driven in and parked on some side on a corner of a building, or am I correct?
You are correct. At some times, in order to gain access into that storage area, I may personally park a trailer out in, you know, behind where the proposed septic system is. Away, out of view, out of sight, in order to gain access inside the chain link storage area in between the four buildings.
Okay, if the board was to consider your application and looked at attaching a condition to it, that anything, any equipment, et cetera, materials that could be, could not be stored within the fenced area, excuse me, or within the building, that they would be located to the rear of all structures. So when I say that, I'm talking about, I'm on the side where the red rectangle is in that area. Yes.
I would agree to that.
I think for the safety of the equipment and not to encourage anybody to go in there, you know, out of sight, out of mind. Okay. I do have another couple of questions. Is your hours, and I'm gonna call hours of operation, so in other words, when will that be open?
I would allow it to be open, and I'm flexible with this, depending on what some suggestions are from the city. Not just the ZBA, but as well as the building commissioner and some other offices. But my thoughts are, you know, seven AM to six PM, the, in order for contractors to come in and get their equipment or their trucks, pull it out of their garage and go to their jobs. Most contractors start at seven, so I might even, you know, say six thirty in the morning until seven at night to when some contractors could potentially be leaving. And that would be six days a week.
Okay, so that'd be Monday through Saturday.
Correct.
Okay.
I would also like to include, in, inclement weather because of our business for servicing local communities. Haywood Hospital, ourselves, that we, we do the snow removal there. I would also like during inclement weather to be allowed to operate our snow removal business out of that without, has it, without any restrictions for, you know, snow removal, snow emergency times.
Okay, so you triggered another question for me. Thank you. Snow removal, you would not have any plans to bring snow to be stored here?
Correct.
Your locations?
Correct.
Okay. Now, we're looking at this plan, so this is a rendering right now. And I believe you said the total acreage is about almost twenty-five acres?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
How much acreage are you planning? I'm gonna just call it clear cut. So you can put your buildings up near access road.
So with the stormwater, the requirements for, to meet mass stormwater standards and for the lead field and all the pavement buildings and whatnot, we're hoping to keep it under ten acres. Obviously, with the, we haven't done perk tests yet for the septic system, so we can't size the system obviously without that. So we're hoping to keep it just the right around ten acres or less. But I, without having a true design, I can't comment on how big the stormwater basins and things would have to be.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Stoddard. Another question, in your package, you stated that there is no city water or sewer services available. Now, in the future, if this becomes more developed as time goes on, there's a possibility of city services being extended, you know, if possible. Is it possible to, I'm thinking as you're constructing this, that you can prepare your lines towards Matthew Street? So if water and sewer does come into the area, that you more efficiently can connect to them. And, you know, you understand what I'm saying, like when they build houses, they do bring the connections right to the road and ready to go if the, kind of if the services are brought in. Is that a possibility?
I would be highly in favor of including that in planning for it. Mr. Stoddard, our engineer, working with us, he might, he might be able to speak to that as well.
Yeah, so that, ultimately, we would love to be able to do that. What we're gonna end up doing is, all the buildings will end up most likely being pumped, have pump chambers up to our lead field. So what we'll be able to do is we can site those in the middle of the pavement in a way that we can basically, for lack of a better term, reverse the pumps to pump it towards the town's system, if it, if and when that ever becomes available. Also, in order to facilitate the water needs for the buildings, we have to locate the well over a hundred feet away from the lead field anyway. So what we can do is we can actually site that well fairly close to Matthews Road, which would allow us to just connect the dots from that location to town water if it becomes available.
Okay.
This site does, just so for you folks, there is a limitation on the site as far as how many gallons per day we can infiltrate on the site. Maximum buildout is ten thousand gallons per day without getting a DEP permit and for a wastewater disposal system. We would have no interest in going over that number because of the cost associated with the sewer treatment plant. So currently, until sewer becomes available, there is a certain limitation that we can't, we wouldn't ever be able to come back to you folks for more buildout until we could address that need.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you gonna, are you gonna have to sprinkle your buildings? Are they of a size that you're gonna have to sprinkle them?
So we were not planning on sprinkler with a meeting with Roland, the building commissioner. These are going to be just under seventy-five hundred square feet at seventy-four hundred ninety-nine. That is the total square footage where at seventy-five hundred square feet, sprinklers are triggered to where fire suppression system.
So I asked.
And the reason why we're pushing right to the envelope is we don't believe that there's a public safety concern with contractor storage bays that nobody's occupying the building.
Okay.
We also have provided thirty foot, thirty-foot travel lanes around, which I know in zoning, the bylaw requires twenty-four foot travel lanes. We've actually upped that to thirty, and the reason we did that was for fire truck access to better be able to navigate the buildings should a fire ever. Should there ever be needed.
Thank you. I'm gonna then ask, other than we'll call volatile compounds, gas, oil, kerosene, fuel oil, et cetera, that's within the, we'll call it the tanks of the vehicles. Will there be any internal storage of barrels or anything of that inside the buildings here?
There may be internal storage of waste oil in order to supply a waste oil furnace, which would be only in our shop area that would, I would occupy. And that would have, be placed on retention pallets for spillage if that were to incur. The other liquid form that would be stored there would be salt brine, which consists of seventy-six percent water, twenty-three percent salt. So that's used in the snow and ice industry to really cut down on the use of rock salt and storing of rock salt and using that in a liquid form.
Will there be any external storage of that material here in bins or barns or, or some kind of container?
If there is, it will be inside of the contractor's storage area that's designated on the plan that we see currently.
Okay. Now, we talked about this property being twenty-five plus or minus acres. Your, Mr. Stoddard stated that possibly you're gonna try keeping the clearing to ten acres or less or plus or minus, you know, an acre or two. Is there any future plans of expanding this operation in this location? Cause you would then have fourteen more acres to go.
So that is a possibility, that's, I guess, phase three. As Mrs. Stoddard mentioned, the gallons per day of ten thousand being the limit, which is what this six-building capacity is just under that capacity for a septic system. So as you see, the access road is, is located in that spot. So if there was approached by some sort of resident or another retail customer or, or, you know, somebody that wanted Route one forty visibility, but side street access, that road is designed to be able to turn right towards Route one forty and allow access to, you know, about a ten-acre parcel, understanding that city water and sewer and potentially gas would need to be brought to the site in order to develop that greater than what you're seeing proposed in front of you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, looking at this map with its, this drawing that's in front of me, I know there are several residences nearby. They are not delineated on this map here. How close are you to those homes? Excuse me, that would be on the, let's say, north, probably on the west side.
I, so the.
Turn on to Matthew Street from one forty.
So the nearest house, the nearest property line of, of the residential, because as you can see to the, to the west of us, there's Commonwealth Massachusetts owns a fairly wide swath of land there. It's two hundred feet from the, from the edge of Mr. Slocum's property to the nearest residential property line. So it's actually about two hundred and thirty-five feet to the house itself.
All right, and keeping that in mind, and this is a pretty fairly heavy, heavily forested area. I know you want to maintain a buffer. We've seen in the past, people, I mean, applicants will say, I'm gonna keep and maintain a hundred-foot buffer. But it ends up that they do have a buffer, we'll say two hundred feet, but they've cut down a hundred and seventy feet of the trees. And they leave thirty feet of trees and the rest is just grassland or dirt.
Yeah, so we don't, we don't have ownership or permission from the state of Massachusetts to cut any of those trees down. So you would still truly have, even if we were allowed to cut all the way up to our property line, we would still have a two-hundred-foot buffer from the, from the nearest resident. We, currently, we are proposing on ours to keep a, about a forty-foot buffer on that western side as existing trees. We don't have any desire to get that close to the property line with anything, so.
Thank you, Mr. Stoddard. I think that, right now, that takes care of my questions. I'll ask Randy or Mike if, if you have any questions at this point.
Is this, is this like, part, is this like partially cleared now?
Uh, yes, the landing, yeah, the, the clearing you see is where the log landing was when they did the logging on the property some years ago.
And whereabouts is that located on your pictorial that you got on the screen? Where is that? Where, whereabouts is that located?
Right under my hand.
Okay.
Right here. And the reason, and again, as Mr. Slocum spoke to, the reason we didn't cite the driveway here, for one, the turning movements around the buildings would be very difficult. And two, it wouldn't have lent us to be able to potentially expand the project in the future. So that's why we, we moved it down and actually where the driveway is currently proposed is a better location as far as sightlines go. You can see in both directions, much, much farther than you could have if we cited the driveway in these.
Okay.
The, the gray area, is that gonna be paved or what, what you're, gonna be gravelled, or is it gonna be paved? What do you, what do you plan for?
Yeah, no, the intention would be for it to be paved, obviously, meaningful ADA, AAD compliance. So that way, it's easier to maintain and it makes more sense. That's, that's the other reason we show so many stormwater basins. Again, these are all purely pictorial, but with that level of impervious area, we do need to be able to infiltrate that. All, as much of it on-site as we can.
That's kind of what I asked, you know, you may, you know, I was wondering if you were planning, you know, where he does a brine system and impervious pavement or something like that, impervious, pervious pavement, or something like that for drainage. Okay, I have no, no further questions this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Haglund. Mike, Mr. Gary, do you have any questions at this point?
Not at this point.
Okay, I have one, just one quick one. Do you plan an external dumpster on this property?
Yes. I think that will help manage trash and disposal and keep the property clean if there is an external dumpster accessible.
Okay, and on this drawing here, there's no indication where that dumpster may be, but that's something to consider. And I'm sure I'm gonna propose that we come out for a site visit, even though your structures are not up, just to get a lay of the land. I have a pretty good idea where the spot is right now, but I just want to confirm that. And we can look at it and we can talk about possibly where you might locate a dumpster on it. But, you know, if you're going to locate it, that's fine, but we'd like it partially shielded. And I'm gonna say a little fencing, but not just plain chain link fencing. It may be chain link that has those plastic straps through it. You want to impede vision into the dumpster. And just try to keep it, I'll call it, as camouflaged as possible. And, okay, so you're gonna put one. All right, I'm all set to move it on. Randy or Mike, anything at this point?
Not now. Jim, Mr. Chairman, I think the applicant needs to address the three conditions for variance.
That is true. I know in the write-up he did, but I agree with you since not everybody has seen that. And what Mr. Haglund is addressing, there's three requirements for variance. And you did them through questions one, two, and three. I'd like to ask you, I'll, I'll pose the, like, number one of I'll start with number three, does it create or aggravate a safety hazard? And that's what I'd ask you to address, and that's really addressing for traffic entering, exiting, the traffic flow, pedestrian traffic and traffic within the site. So if you could address that, if you're creating a hazard or just enhancing one even more. So the floor is yours, Mr. Slocum.
Yeah, I can take this one. Yeah, so we do not believe we're, we're creating or enhancing a hazard. Matthews Road is, is a, is a fairly well-traveled road, single lane in each direction. But we are generating, we are in a good location for access to and from the site. We are, it's the intention of the project to suggest to the tenants to utilize Route one forty, which is a state highway. Obviously, it can take, you know, tens of thousands of vehicles trips a day. There's currently no provision for pedestrian, pedestrians, no sidewalks on Matthews Road. So we don't envision any additional foot traffic to and from the site. It's not a retail location. The site has, the internal portion of the site has been designed so that way vehicular traffic can navigate around similar to a parking lot at Walmart, full twenty-four foot plus lanes, full ten foot by twenty foot parking stalls. We believe, we've created, we believe the design is sufficient for all internal vehicular traffic. I believe that answers the question or addresses it.
The number two, and I'll put it sort of, you know, brief is does this derogate from the intent of the zoning ordinance? We know it does because you're here. But your argument, how it does not materially impact or derogate from the ordinance. So I'd ask either Mr. Slocum or Mr. Stoddard to address that. And in your grant, you do address, you know, the plans the city has had for this area, business site study. So, okay, the floor is yours now. business site study. So, okay, the floor is yours now.
Oh, yeah, that, uh, thanks. I appreciate that. That was, um, exactly what I was gonna say, that the town has in the past spent money to look at this exact location for, um, commercial industrial development. While we agree that obviously who we, we don't meet the zoning regulation, because that's why we are here. Um, but we believe that we're far enough away from any other residential properties, um, to kind of set ourselves outside of that area. Well, yes, we are still in the zoning district. We believe that we are a prime location to be able to, um, utilize this, this kind of a development and not directly impact, um, any of the residential properties or create a safety hazard for them.
Okay. And question one, since this is a use variance, it, it changes the rules a little bit because we're not talking about financial hardship due to shape topography of the land, but we're looking at changing your use and really it's what's the impact to the area versus the permitted use for the area? And how does it tie in with any master plan with the city? And I will refer again to the business site study done in two thousand and seventeen. So and how what you're doing is not a negative impact to the area? And how it, you know, it is sort of accommodating the use of the area. So I'll let you go from there, Mr. Stoddard.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, we are trying to, obviously, it's a completely raw land, so we are going to be disturbing and changing something out there. But the intention of, the intent of the project is to not wholesale destroy the property, not take away the character of it. Uh, we do want to, uh, we want to utilize as much of the property in its existing form as we can, you know, take, you don't wanna have thirty foot retaining walls and huge cuts and fills and all those things. We wanna really kind of make, make it fit the area, um, which hopefully will, will drive, um, people to be able to come to this, uh, development and utilize it for their contractor business, which in turn will hopefully, you know, obviously grow your tax base in your town. Um, we, you know, we are gonna have to do some change here, but we do, we, it is our intention to keep it as close and to the existing character of the area and not, we don't wanna level it and make a Walmart style thing. We wanna really kind of make it fit the property real nice and make it fit in the area.
Okay.
I could add to that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
The existing space within the city defined industrial space for use is at its limit. Uh, adding potentially thirty-two rental bays for smaller businesses to go to that can't afford developing this on their own. I think that would create a good, safe place for them to operate business legally in the city of Gardner. We would not be, uh, you know, this is zoned for residential homes. Um, if this was denied, we would potentially look at, um, new home construction, potentially adding upwards to twelve or fifteen new homes in this area, which would definitely put another load on the school system, uh, as well. Um, and that's something that we don't feel is the best use of that land, abutting Route one forty. Yeah, being able to positively help the city, uh, kind of get the contractors and the businesses in an area to where, uh, it makes sense to where in the future, if expansion does happen, or if we just stay with those six buildings, I would consider bringing sewer and water down that area uh, in order to service and increase the tax base without, uh, challenging the school system and burdening them with potentially, uh, thirty, forty, or fifty children.
Okay. Thank you. And I think it, as you know, as the board's looking at your request here, which is a little out of the box, and that's why your responses are very important of how you look at it, what your plans are and what the impact is. But also very importantly, always keep in mind that you want to maintain a very attractive location. Uh, because what it does, it's, it's coming into the city and it presents a good picture of the city and not some, I'll call it just big truck yard somewhere that they're all parked, you know, and everything's messy, et cetera. So behooves you for your own reputation and helping the city maintain a good reputation, as you say, to draw in more commercial, industrial business and grow the base in the city. Okay, so I'll ask my two members, Mr. Haglund, Mr. Gary, if you have any questions at this point in time.
No further questions.
Mr. Gary, none either? Okay.
None.
Okay, then I'm gonna move it forward and ask if there are any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application. Other representatives. Excuse me.
Roland would like to speak.
Did you, uh, say you wanted to speak?
I did, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Um, just like to remind the board that where this use variance to be granted, Mr. Slocum's next, next move would be to go before the planning board for site plan review. And keeping that in mind, I wonder if a site visit is warranted, being as it's only a use variance. I would like to say that there is a need for this, this type of project in the city. I, I see a need every day. People come to me wanting to stack contractors' yards in their backyards, and I have to deny them. If there was a place for them to go, it would be fantastic for everyone involved, and I think it's a good spot for it. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jean. Uh, are there any other representatives of, representatives of the cities to speak regarding this application? Any other representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Any of butters present who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any butters who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there, are there any of butters who oppose this application? Are there any butters who would like to oppose this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to oppose this application? Any interested parties who would like to oppose this application? Being known for the record, there was no one to oppose. Uh, there was no one to speak for or against other than Mr. Jean. Okay, I'm gonna open it up again to my two members, Mr. Haglund and Mr. Gary.
Nothing here.
Okay.
I think, um, Mr. Jean had, Commissioner Jean has a, a valid point about where this still has to go through site plan review. Is it, is it worth us going to do a site visit? I, I don't know. I'll leave it up to you two. I don't care one way or the other.
Well, let me ask, Jean, uh, do you, is there a site plan review scheduled for, by the planning board at this time?
No, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Slocum has not applied for site plan review yet because he's waiting for the outcome of the use variant.
Okay.
But I can tell you that it will go before development review, before it goes to site plan review. So if it goes forward, that you and I will be sitting at that table to bring forward these same concerns again.
Yeah. I think in the long run, my opinion is, I mean, I know pretty much where the property is. Uh, there are a lot of trees there right now, so the boundaries are not clearly marked out at this point in time. I still think, uh, for the benefit of my two members, if, I'm not sure how familiar they are with the area. But I'd like to take a very short site visit there and see where the approximate entrance to the location's gonna be. I know a section has already been logged off and we can match it up to the drawing. Uh, and I think I give a, either a comfort or discomfort level when I see the property. And also the location of the residential, uh, parcels that are nearby. You know what I mean? Then we'll just quote what we feel is conditions if we are to approve it or reason to deny it and then go forward. Uh, cause I know it's very expensive to draw up plans uh, before they really get an approval for zoning. It's almost the chicken and the egg, which one do you go to first, zoning or planning? So I'll take my comments from my members. If you feel a quick visit, just to get a little, a lay of the land. Mr. Haglund?
I'm okay with a visit.
Mr. Gary?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I know the area, but I can, I can do a, a, a quick visit.
Yeah, and I think, and Mr. Slocum and Mr. Stoddard could provide some verbiage when we're there to explain some of the issues that might be there.
I can make myself available whenever you folks want.
Was that Mr. Stoddard?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry. Yes.
Okay. All right, I think, uh, what we can do is we'll schedule it generally a Saturday probably or, you know, mid-evening, I'll call it, the six thirty, seven o'clock timeframe would be the best. Mr. Stoddard, Mr. Slocum, we could have our secretary, Rachel, get in touch with you, um, to see if the time is good because we can coordinate our times. I'll ask the board if, if you feel necessary to continue this case or move to close the, uh, the meeting on this case. And then we'll just see the site visit and go from there.
I don't see any reason to continue.
Okay. Mr. Haglund, you agree?
Yes, I do.
Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing on Mr. Slocum?
So moved.
So moved, seconded. I think it'll work.
We'll let Rachel figure that one out.
You're all expected to move on to closure. Any further discussion? No further discussion and all in favor?
I am.
Closing this public hearing, I have an eye for Mr. Gary. Do I have him?
I, I.
The Haglund and I for myself, uh, majority, I mean unanimous, the, the public hearing on the application of, uh, Mr. Slocum for Zero Matthew Street for a contract, contractors yard is closed. And Mr. Slocum and Mr. Stoddard, we will have, uh, Rachel T. Ollie get in touch with you and establish a time. What is the best time for you? Either of you?
Uh, this is, this is, uh, Chris Stoddard. Uh, nights work best for me during the week. But I can make a weekend work probably too, but evenings are fine for me during the week if that's possible.
Yeah. We're pretty flexible. I think Randy, uh, you're probably the one that, what time generally if we do it in the evening, it's after six thirty, okay?
After six thirty is better, Mr. Chairman, yes.
Okay.
We'll just have to bring, bring our bug spray, that's all.
Let's let Rachel work on that. Now she knows the parameters we have. And, uh, we can go from there. Okay?
If it's this week, if it's this week. If it's this week, Mr. Chairman, I'm good for any day except for Thursday.
Uh, for this week, I am out for Saturday. Actually, I'm actually out from Thursday on, so I'd like to do it early next week if possible.
Okay, and Tuesday, Tuesday is how we have that, uh, webinar with the, that attorney on Tuesday, so it won't be next Tuesday.
How's Monday?
Monday is open.
Mike?
Looking, yeah, I, it, it looks good right now.
Okay, how about Mr. Stoddard, Mr. Slocum, Monday, okay, around six thirty?
Um, I have a, uh, select board meeting in the town of Littleton, but if, if Mr. Slocum can be there, I think he can answer all the questions. We're both very intimate with the site, so we both know exactly what's going on there.
How about you, Mr. Slocum? Is that a good time?
Sure, if we can't make it tomorrow, next Monday at six thirty would be good. I'd be happy to walk you around the property and show you what's cleared and accessed.
Okay, so we'll take, we'll plan six thirty at the property. Rachel will send out a notice to remind us.
Yes, I will.
Okay. All right, thank you very much for your presentation. And we're gonna move on to the next case. Next case.
I'll be in touch, Tim.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Rachel?
Just let everybody know that I'll be in touch with them before the end of the week.
Okay. Next case, two oh two one dash oh five dash oh one. For special permit for Tom Land for thirty-one branch street additional rental units. And before I read it further, I just need to move away Mr. Slocum's paperwork here. Then I can get into reading. Okay. Okay, then the Mr. Land's application to construct a fourth residential unit at thirty-one branch street Gardner Mass, parcel ID, M twenty-two dash one dash one, located in a single-family residential one, zoning district R one, is denied, is denied as it does not comply with chapter six seventy-five, attachment one colon one of city code of Gardner. The zoning code states that your use number four, three family, three dash four family dwelling is a not permitted use in R one zoning district. So Mr. Land, agent or attorney?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. This is Attorney Christine Tree. I'm here for Mr. Land, the owner who is also with us on Zoom.
Okay, thank you. And I assume, uh, Attorney Tree, you're gonna do the conversation of the presentation?
Uh, with your permission, if you don't mind.
Uh, please move forward.
Thank you. Um, I am going to begin sharing my screen at this point, um, to start the presentation.
And I just ask you, to Attorney Tree, that remember, uh, the people in the audience have not seen, other than the plans, have not seen the write-ups or anything. So as you, you develop your case, you can bring in all the facts.
I will do that in, um, we are asking for a special permit here, so I will go through the special permit criteria, um, after the introduction. So this is a request to extend, um, a pre-existing non-conforming use. Um, this is a three-story structure. It's located on about a three-quarter of an acre lot, thirty-one branch street. Um, before you, you see, uh, an excerpt from the assessor's map. This is the subject parcel right here. Um, the, uh, current, uh, structure is about thirty-four hundred square feet in size. It is the last lot on the right of a dead-end road. Um, and it, it, as you can see, occupies a very small portion of the lot, as the lot, again, is three-quarters of an acre. It's large in size, built in about nineteen twenty, currently used as a three-family. All three, um, apartments are occupied. They're all two-bedroom. The applicant is proposing to take the basement unit and the basement is a walkout basement, um, so it's a tall basement structure. Uh, the basement unit and turn it into a one-bedroom. Um, this is, while it's not allowed in this zoning district, which is residential one, it is, uh, an extension of the pre-existing non-for, non-conforming use that is allowed by special permit under section six seventy-five four twenty. Um, in addition, you'll see in there, there's a, a, a note, um, that there's a request, uh, to alter the pre-existing non-conforming structure. The structure is a, a little too close to the street under current setbacks. It's about fifteen feet away from the street, so it is a, a non-conforming structure in that sense. Um, but, uh, as part of the renovation, there's going to be a fire suppression system installed. Um, there's a vestibule on the left side of the building, as you're looking at the front, that will get extended a little bit in order to accommodate the systems for that prior fire suppression system, um, so that the extension would not, uh, increase any non-conformity that, um, the structure has, again, which is the setback from the road.
May I interrupt Attorney Tree just for a moment?
Yes.
Now, as I read the, uh, the Nile letter from Mr. Jean, this being in, in R one zone and it's, states is not permitted, which the first reaction is that's a variance. Then you just referred- Then you just referred to six seventy-five, but I didn't catch what section you mentioned because you're now talking at the point of a non-existing, non-conforming use or an extension of existing, non-conforming. And what section was under six seventy-five, attachment one? Did you refer to?
Section four twenty, sub B, sub one, sub A.
Okay, in four twenty?
Yes.
Okay, I'll go to four twenty, you may continue your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And just I, my first reaction to this project was the same that we needed a variance. I did review in greater depth your zoning ordinance and discussed this briefly with Mr. Jean and have proceeded in a special permit. So again, introducing the property, it's located on a dead-end street in residential one. And before you, you now see the recorded plan for the property showing the dimensions other than the fact that it confirming the size of the lot and the location of the house on it, I don't think there's too much of relevance in there for the application. Now, what you see before you now is pardon me. The pictures which were appended to the application as exhibit J. This is the front of the structure. So again, you can see the existing structure. Off to the side, there is a dirt parking area that is where the residents are currently parking. Mr. Land has a fair number of renovations that he proposes to do, obviously in the unit. But also the, obviously, the addition of the fire suppression system is a substantial modification and I would say improvement to the building. And additionally, he proposes to construct an eight-space parking lot. That plan was submitted to you as exhibit I and is now on your screen. As you can see, the the parking lot would comply with all setbacks. It would provide all required parking under the zoning ordinance without reduction and should leave an extra space for visitors or guests. I am sure that the chair will be asking where snow storage would be placed on the parking lot and it would be removed to the rear of the property. The lot is almost completely cleared and level and removal of the snow to the rear of the lot is not going to cause any, any issue. I'd like at this point to go through the special permit criteria, but I did briefly want to review the pictures that had been submitted. We submitted pictures of the surrounding properties. So you'll see this multifamily to the right. You'll see at the bottom right of this page, the three single families across the street. And then again, more pictures showing you the the condition of the locus and the setback from the neighbor's yard. These are pictures to the rear of the property. Again, it shows it's a large, level, cleared lot.
Attorney Tree, where did you say the little bump out was gonna be for sprinkler equipment? Where was that gonna be located?
If you're looking at the front of the building, it's to the left and with this picture right here on the bottom right, you'll see a little vestibule right there starting from the building. That'll be extended and enclosed just a little bit to accommodate the suppression system so that, again, that's going towards the side of the property that has the most room on it. It is not, it is behind the front line of the house. So it does not increase or I think really even the setbacks.
Okay. Wasn't that proposed to be the entrance to the basement apartment, that that door, too?
Yes, so let's see. The plan of the building was submitted to you as exhibit and I'm just going to bring up the application, pardon the scrolling.
We're not used to such a complete application again. Yeah, there's a plan by Lorgan, Lorgan Architects, I think that delineates it pretty well.
Right here, right here. So this shows you the proposed basement apartment, again, a one-bedroom apartment. And so that vestibule would also be the main entry for that apartment. You can see the cutout that was visible from the front of the building over here. So the total, if I can increase so we can read the numbers. So I would say that this vestibule will stick out from that side of the house, six feet in total. It is eight foot four in width, so again, a small vestibule. If it's all right, I will move on to the special permit criteria.
Yes, please.
Yes.
We submitted, of course, a substantial narrative, but I will review that briefly at this point in time. So I'm first gonna go through the regular special permit criteria and then the additional criteria under the change to non-conforming use in structure. So the proposal shall be suitably located in the neighborhood in which it is proposed and compatible with the neighborhood character, existing uses and other uses permitted by right. At this point in time, I am going to move to exhibit H in your packet, and this is our analysis of the neighborhood and its various uses according to the assessor's maps. This, again, it's an existing neighborhood, existing structure. It is a mixed-use neighborhood. The orange that you see in this map is the single family, so there is no doubt that there is, there is a substantial number of single-family homes. However, you see three two-family homes that in light purple. Another multifamily at the end of the street in red. And we did find that within about a tenth of a mile, there's also, of course, industrial uses. This parcel borders on the industrially zoned parcel to the left of the screen in blue, which I understand there were some proposals to develop recently that did not move forward. At any rate, there's not an existing use on there that would interfere or would be interfered by the increase from a three to a four family. I don't think, as I've said, I don't think this would be a big increase in density because the single-family homes, as you see, are on smaller lots. This is a larger lot size, so if you look at density, it's not a large increase. Second criteria is that the proposal shall provide convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets. There is not an existing sidewalk on this street. As we've said, we propose to install parking that is sufficient within zoning requirements without additional relief. And because it's on a cleared lot at the end of a dead-end street, there should be no interference with traffic or safety. The proposal shall provide adequate space for off-street parking and loading. Again, we provide in the proposed parking plan, one more space than required for use of guests. Snow storage I have addressed. This is also a parking lot closer to the vestibule for entry in the proposed unit. The fourth requirement is that there be sufficient facilities for the storage of refuse, water, other waste products. You may have seen in one of the pictures, they are using the city barrels for trash disposal. There's no provision anticipated necessary to install a dumpster on that site. If any of the board members did drive by the site recently, there is both a container and a dumpster on site. The dumpster should be removed for, towards the end of the week. We did a cleanup on the property. And the container is storage for some construction materials to begin the project. Again, city water and sewer, so there's no issue with that. Criteria five, it's the proposal shall not be cause a nuisance. Where there's an existing three-family, the addition of a one-bedroom unit should not cause any additional nuisance, particularly given the setback from other properties. And of course, any criteria the city has regarding work hours would be complied with by Mr. Land. Sixth criteria, the proposal shall not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard. Again, there's a short-term inconvenience in the sense that there's gonna be construction ongoing. There should not be a substantial amount of construction in the exterior of the property. And with the addition of the fire suppression system, that will increase the fire safety for residents. Seventh criteria, the proposal is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. We have proposed that this will add quality rental housing and increase fire safety by the addition of the fire suppression system. The eighth criteria is that it shall not have a significant detrimental impact on city services. This shall not, at most, you have one or two children, which I I think would be hard-pressed to fit that many in a one-bedroom apartment, but there's not likely to be any substantial addition to the school system or other city systems. Ninth, proposal is consistent with the city's community development plan or master plan. So we did cite and give you as exhibit E an excerpt from the Gardner Community Development Plan, section two point one, which talks about promoting a variety of housing in and near the downtown, both through expanding housing on existing lots and developing infill lots. And we would argue that this meets that criteria because it does expand the available rental housing by adding the additional unit. That completes the special permit criteria under section eleven seventy. There are two criteria under change to a non-conforming user structure. As to change to a non, change to an existing non-conforming use. The the special permit may allow this change or an extension if it's not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming use to the neighborhood. And that is in section four twenty, sub B, sub one, sub A. Again, it is adding a one-bedroom unit. There will be adequate parking. The parking will be an improvement on the existing parking. There should not be any load on street parking. So and the the housing will not change its footprint. It will not raise its height. And so this should continue to be in character with that neighborhood of mixed uses. And finally, in order to alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure under four twenty B one, excuse me, four twenty, sub C, sub one. The alteration can be approved by special permit if, again, it is not substantially more detrimental than the existing non-conforming structure to the neighborhood. And that alteration may be simply a structural alteration or an alteration to provide for a different purpose or the same purpose in a different manner. Again, looking at that substantially not more detrimental. This concerns the vestibule extension that will, again, house the fire suppression system and provide an entry to the first-floor tenant. We would argue that it actually provides a benefit to the neighborhood in the sense of increased fire safety and certainly does not provide more detriment. I wanted to just give a few updated photos. The owner did do a little property cleanup over the weekend. And I did want to make that visible to the board in case they had recently gone by. So I think these are some pictures of the right-hand side of the property, which is is clean and orderly. This is to the rear. Again, the rear yard. And that is the storage container for the construction materials and tools.
Attorney Tree, did he clean it up just because we made do a site visit or is there a reason why it was falling into disrepair before?
I would not call it disrepair, I would say that there property in in def, unsightly. This owner bought the property in February twenty twenty. There's always in some changes that take place when a new owner comes in. And I think that this had just been something that hadn't been addressed yet. Certainly, keeping the property neat and tidy is appropriate and if the board were to consider that as a condition of the special permit, I think it appropriate. I will say that I I like the property to be presented to the board in its best light. And but I also want the board to see that the property is going to be maintained by the owner and show the potential for that.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add at this time, counselor?
I believe Tom Lamb would like to say something.
May I ask who that was speaking?
He.
Mr. Chairman.
That was me, right?
No, I'm addressing Counselor Tree. If she has any comments at this point, additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not, if my client, Mr. Land, has something he would like to add, of course, I want Mr. Chair to hear it.
Okay, if he's ready, then yes, we will hear what he has to say now.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Chairman. Okay, the comment I would like to make is the reason why I clean up the site is just because it's spring cleanup, so I I purchased the property last year and I have been maintaining the property ever since I purchased the property. So I have been doing maintenance on the property, so it's just like a routine cleanup that I do to the property.
Okay. Thank you for that. You know, and I think, as I will state to Counselor and to you, we do have the ability, if we are to look at favorably upon your request and grant it, to add conditions to it. And one would do the maintenance and the upkeep of the property that could be inspected by the building commissioner at any time. And if it's not being adhered to, it could have some negative implications. And of course, we all don't want that. So it really behooves you to keep, you know, keep it clean, neat and not strewn with trash and appliances and stuff like that. Okay, that's just my comments. I will go back to your counsel, Attorney Tree.
Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but I've completed the presentation.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open it up to my two members, Mr. Haglund and Mr. Gary.
Yeah, I have a question. I have a question. I noticed on the assessor's card, it's listed already as a four-unit apartment. And looking at the picture that you have on the screen, there are four mailboxes. So are we looking to create a fifth apartment or to codify an illegal fourth apartment?
Mr. Chair, we're not looking to codify an illegal fourth department, but I am gonna let Mr. Land answer tell you the reason why there's a fourth mailbox.
Okay, Mr. Land?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Okay, um, so.
Yes, Mister Chairman. Okay, um, so I'm just gonna give a little backstory of what's happening in this property. So I purchased this property back in last February. I purchased it as a four family. And it is stated as such on the assessors card and according to the, the city's tax record, it has always been a full family. But it's just the fact that I believe, I was told by the previous owner that the fourth unit, which is down the basement, is a walked out unit. It was flooded somehow about ten, fifteen years ago. The previous owner before I, before the owner whom I bought it from gathered the whole basement unit. It was all gutted out because the wood, the floor was all rotted out. It was gutted out and then they had the, every intention as I was told to reinstate it back to its original shape to use as a fourth unit, but it was never the plan never materialized. And then it was sold to the owner who I bought it from. And it has been sitting as, in as such state as, you know, was never put back to his, his original shape with the kitchen, with the drywall and, and with the bathroom. And so it has been considered as abandoned, I would say, ever since it was gutted about ten, fifteen years ago. And, um, to add to that, um, one of the, the proof or evidence that I would have to show that it was a legal four apartment, if you would, is that there are actually five electrical meters on the house. So four for each of the units and one for the house. And Mister Chairman, those are all the comments I have right now, for now.
Okay, Mister Haglund, does that answer your question?
Yes, Mister Chairman, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mister Lamb.
Mister Lamb, is question or, as I stated before, the board can put some conditions on this. And if the board would look favorably, favorably to grant that and stated that it will never be greater than a four family unit or four family home, you'd have no issues with that?
Yes, there are no issues.
Okay. So the fourth mailbox really has no owner at this point in time?
Actually, that is my mailbox as of now.
Okay. Then who do the other three belong to? Your tenants?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Excellent, thank you. Mister Gary, you have any questions right now?
Not at this time.
Okay, so I'll open it up at this point. Are there any representatives of the city to speak regarding this application? Are there any rep, oh, there is Mister Dean, yes, our building commissioner, please.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I'd just like to state that with the, the addition of the parking lot and the fire suppression system, the building department would be in full support of this project. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other additional, I'm sorry, any other city officials to speak regarding this application? Any other city officials to speak regarding this application? Any butters to the property who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any butters to the property to speak in favor of? Any butters to the property who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Any butters to the property to speak in opposition to this application? Please have it noted for the record, there's no one speaking, butters speaking for or against. Are there any interest?
Mister, Mister Chairman, Mister Chairman, there is a, a hand up, Sue Moriarty.
Okay, I did not see any hand. I don't have them all on the screen. Let me go to it.
I just have a question. I just have a question, actually.
Okay, I'm sorry, I did not see your hand. So please.
So my name is Sue Moriarty. I live on Parker Street, so this house is behind my house. I live at four seven seven Parker Street. I had a couple of questions just because of the, um, the discussion that we had before about the proposed apartments down the street. I guess my only concern really, I mean, I do have a fence behind my house, so I really don't see too, too much of what goes on in the back except for what's above fence, fence level. But my question is, when you're talking, Miss Tree, about the mixed use neighborhood, I, I don't know a lot of what's happening back there, but it seems like a real residential neighborhood we live in. I don't feel that, I don't know where mixed use is. And number two, I'm just concerned that if we go to a four unit, is that gonna change anything in terms of zoning? Because I, I don't, you know, I'm just concerned about that being called something else and then ending up with this, which we may anyway, multi-unit buildings down the street. So I, I just don't want that to put our neighborhood further and further toward some kind of a zoning that goes away from our single-family home zoning. I'm just asking that question. And also about the mixed use, I'm not aware of other mixed uses in our neighborhood.
Attorney Tree, would you like to answer it or I could?
Certainly. And, and Ms. Moriarty, thank you for the two questions. I appreciate it. It's, we so often present these and no one speaks, so it's always nice to speak to in a matter. When I, your comment and your question is a good reminder of me to be very precise in my language. And when I say mixed use, it should really be mixed residential use. So that means some single families, some two families, some three families, some multifamilies.
I was, so where are the multifamilies?
If you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen again, so that I can show you on the map that we put together. And I'm gonna do this one. And, okay. So on this map, what we've done, where it says locus, that is the parcel that we're talking about on Branch Street, right here.
Yeah.
So the other multifamily is right here on the corner in red. Next to it, there are two light purple properties. Those are two family properties.
Yeah, that's my next door neighbor. So that's what you mean when you say multifamily. We're not talking about anything over a three family so far in our neighborhood.
The, the one on the right hand corner, and just to, to say to you, we go by the uses on the assessors cards when we draft these maps, showing the, the mix of uses. So multifamily means to me more than three, more than three. It doesn't, it's usually a four to eight, and the zoning cards don't always differentiate where between coordinated falls. The green lot right here is a three family according to its assessors card. And then light purple up here is also another two family.
Yeah, I, I don't think that that house on the corner next to the purple one in the front on Parker Street, that's, that's a, a small one story with a second structure, a little living residential unit next to it. So that, I don't think that's a four family. So really, we're not going over three families in our neighborhood, so.
And then to, to your second question, you had asked whether this is a proposal to change the zoning.
I, I didn't say a proposal to change it. I said, will this change it because it's the first four unit in the neighborhood?
I, I'd certainly let the board or the building commerce commissioner address that because they speak on behalf of the city, not me. But I, I would generally say that we're asking for special permission. That means it's something that's subject to just this lot and just this use, and the board is free to put whatever conditions on it they want. That does not mean it expands to the rest of the neighborhood at all. I, I do know that, that industrial parcel that was over to the left, I did hear that there was, of course, a big issue recently with a large development going on there. That's not, that's not anything that has anything to do with my client. And, and this is, again, a large three quarter of acre lot. The footprint on the lot is being the same.
I, I understand that, but I just don't want, you said it wouldn't change the footprint. I just want to make sure that it doesn't change the footprint. So I don't, I don't have a concern about yeah, this house in particular. I have a concern that it could change the footprint. And then we could be looking at more, many or more multi, multifamily, more than three, or this one for, for family.
You know, other than what I've said, which again, the board is only dealing with this one use, this doesn't extend any changes to any other lots. And anyone who is trying to put a higher density use, you know, more family building on a lot is gonna have to come before this board to get permission to do that. So it's not a blanket change at all.
Are there any other comments from the board for me on that question that I have? Because I know nothing about zoning, so I just want to make sure. And I'm, I know, I, I hope you understand what, what I'm concerned about.
So there's no issues, uh, that's more reality. That's what the person, a purpose of this meeting is to allow the public to view what's happening and have the right to ask any questions so they fully understand what's going on. I'd like to, if possible, and I think Attorney Tree addressed it, but defer just to the building commissioner regarding your question about any changes in zoning before. Excuse me, I answer it regarding this area. So if maybe you want to take your screen down, Attorney Tree?
Do that.
And Mister Jean, would you be willing to make a comment regarding Ms. Moriarty's, you know, zoning gonna be changed or what's happening?
Absolutely. I can tell you that this special permit is site specific for Mister Land's property and Mister Land's property only. I can also tell you that the property next to you that has the proposal for the multifamily units is a, is an overlay district that's approved for multifamily units. So that's already been approved. Nothing is gonna change with that. And this cer, this case is certainly not gonna affect anything in regard to what you're talking about.
Thank you, Mister Jean. Ms. Moriarty, also just to add to that, as you noted, or as was, it was noted, this is listed in the city as a four family. At one time it was. For some reason, it was vacated. The city records don't always update as quickly and change. It doesn't mean that automatically can become a four family. That's why it's before this board. That time has gone by, but nothing, and when we talked about an, an existing non-conforming use, that wasn't, excuse me, an existing non-conforming use at one time, been vacated. If he wanted to add a, a building or another two rooms, totally going against what was there, possibly it would not happen. It's staying within the same footprint that's been there. So it's not impacting any of his butters, neighbors, et cetera. And, you know, that's the best I really can state is that, that's how a non-conforming use is looked at.
Okay, thank you.
Are you okay with the, your question? You feel satisfied?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, and I forgot even where it was now. Any other butters to speak favorably or against this application? Any other butters or interested parties who would like to speak favorably or against this application? Have it noted that there are no comments and questions. I'll ask my members, Mister Gary, Mister Haglund, if you have any additional questions at this point?
No, I think all of my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Gary.
No, I have none.
Okay. Do you feel a site visit is necessary? Well, to help the board along, I feel like I'd like to go to the site and just view it.
Yeah, if we can do it, if we can do it the same night as we're doing the, the other one next Monday.
Okay. And your start time is what, six o'clock, Mister Haglund?
Six thirty.
It is six thirty.
All right, I think we'll have time to complete over your short visit of Mister Slokums, and we'll go down to Mister Land's property. Attorney, are you planning to join that site visit?
I am, Mister Chair.
Okay. Mister Lamb, you be available next week to be on site?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Do you feel we can close this case, this application?
Yes.
Board members, if you do, I'd like to hear a motion to close the public hearing on the application of Mister Lamb.
Move to close this hearing.
Second emotion.
Okay. Any further discussion? No further discussion at all in favor of closing the public hearing on Mister Lamb? And we will establish a site visit and go from that point. And Rachel will contact you, Attorney Tree, to, to schedule it.
I think seven, seven o'clock, Mister Chairman, seems to make some sense, seven o'clock?
Sounds good.
We're at six thirty on Matthew Street.
Yep, seven o'clock, Mister Lamb, that okay?
Yes, sir, seven o'clock works. Yes, sir.
Attorney Tree, that's fine with your schedule?
Yes, it is, Mister Chair.
All in favor of closing the public hearing on this application of Mister Lamb, would you hand up, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, aye.
An animus vote. Public hearing closed on Mister Lamb. We'll see you next week at seven o'clock.
Thank you, Mister Chair, and thank you, board members. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Now, before I close the, the hearing totally, I'd like to ask Mister Jean to update the board on Dyer Street that we recently rendered a decision on.
Thank you, Mister Chairman. I did a, I did an inspection at one forty-five Dyer Street yesterday, the Angela Smith case. And all of the animals have been removed. There is not, not one left. Even though she was allowed to keep twelve of the chickens, she decided against it. And I just wanted that to be on the record that she has complied. Thank you.
Oh, let me ask you a question, though, Mister Jean. Running parallel with Dyer Street, I'll call it, there was that big natural berm. Is that still in existence? It was comprised of straw and other materials?
Yes, it is, but it's safe to say that it won't get any bigger now.
Excellent. All right. Well, that's a great, that's great news to hear. Oh, thank you. Rachel Taylor, do we have any minutes that we need to vote on?
They were sent out. I don't know whether you've all reviewed them. I haven't actually had edited or reviewed ones back from you guys. So if you want to just extend them out to the next meeting, we can do that.
Okay, so we'll do it next meeting?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else from my members?
Nothing.
Okay, Mister Ante, or remember you're gonna be on the, the case of, of Community Health Connections? When that comes up. I think you're muted.
For June?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And Rachel will get you, did you get a package?
I
I haven't sent the June package out yet.
Okay. All right, then you'll get that. Very good. Thank you to my members, everybody, for all set. Throw your motion to close the here, the meeting.
Some of, so moved.
Seconded. Hi.
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 Meeting closed, meeting adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.